It says record.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. I am going to call this order and get started. Announcement this evening, tonight during the public hearing of the Village of Washington, North Carolina. Public comments must be specific to the sixty-one East Main Street project or the Cisaza project. Comments are requested to be limited to three minutes per person. The chairperson reserves the right to allow extended time and do additional comments as time is scheduled from now. Public comments submitted in uniform were distributed to all those Plating Board members for review and consideration. Could you receive a note from Mr. Willie that early? Thank you very much, and it has been distributed. Does anybody who would like to public speak? I don't know that we have a list out just yet. We have a new court photographer, but I'm gonna circulate a list of these papers and put your name on it to public speak. Let me just use one of those. Thank you. Okay, the next Village Plating Board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P. M. When the vote is called and what's authorized notice. Line item four, we cannot do this evening because we definitely had three members at the twenty-eight March twenty twenty-three meeting, and one of those members is absent this evening, so I will have to wait for the next meeting. Line item five, the motion to accept the general orders of four eleven, or sixty-one East Main Street, and this as a public hearing to be held on four twenty-five to seven P. M. Aye, aye.
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 Four ayes. That's motion carried. Okay, six public hearing. The motion, open the public hearing for James Cisaza. Subdivision lot lot change, section block and lot, one-one-eight dash one dash one, one-one-eight dash one dash three, one-two-one dash one dash one dot one. Motion, please.
Make the motion. Second. Aye.
Four ayes, motion is carried. Okay, do we have anyone who wishes to speak on the Cisaza lot line change?
Should we bring you up, up here? The applicant.
Cisaza, please.
I'm right here.
Thank you.
I didn't want to be limited to three minutes.
Maybe to start just a brief presentation of what he's doing.
Okay, Mr. Cisaza.
Okay, what I'm proposing is a lot line change between two parcels which are all by myself and other family members. What we're doing basically is expanding a lot which is currently one point five-five acres. We're adopting some area from the two adjacent parcels so that the final lot will be three point four-three acres, approximately doubling in size. The reason for that is the one point five-five acre parcel currently has residents on it. It's occupied by my brother-in-law. We have an adjacent parcel on which there is a garage which is used as an adjunct of the house. And there's also a storage building where we keep lawn mowing equipment and also some of the farm equipment that we have for the parcel. So by making the entire parcel larger, we incorporate those two buildings into the parcel. Other than that, there's no other changes. We are cutting off the end of one lot. That would be lot one-eighteen-one dash three. That's going to be merged into the one-twenty-one-one-point-one lot so that we don't have any issue about isolated, non-road frontage parcel. So that's what's being proposed. The new lot lines are all in compliance with the exception of one of the existing lot lines which we're adopting as part of our new parcel. And there was a setback issue there. I had gone to the ZBA, presented the information to the ZBA. They could not take formal action because you haven't acted yet as a planning board, but they did take a straw poll in which they've indicated they would grant the variance. So once this board acts, issues a negative deck, gets the feedback from Orange County, and adopts the plan here, it can be subject to final approval by the ZBA. Any questions, Board members?
I hope I have no questions. Anyone in the public wish to speak on Mr. Cisaza's lot line application? Have you got nothing heard from the public? Oh, wait, we have one in the back. Go ahead, please. Say your name and address, please.
Do I have to come up in here as speaker, or can I speak from here?
You can speak from there. Just make sure we can hear you.
You can hear me over this?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Jolie Zara, and I live at seventy-one West Main Street. And I have a question. I think I'm okay with math, but I'm adding these, and I don't, it doesn't add up. So I just want a clarification. It says that, at least this is what was written for the public meeting tonight. It says that you're going to enlarge an existing one-point-five-five acre lot to be a total of three-point-four-three acres. It's almost a full two acres, right? If my math is right, one-point-five-five to three-point-four-three is almost two acres. Right?
Just under ten, yes.
Thank you. But then it says that he's going to be moving, reducing one-point-seven to one-point-oh-four. That's less than an acre. One-point-seven to one-point-oh-four. So if you carry the zero, it'd be seventy minus four is six-point-sixty-six, right?
I can answer that.
Okay, hold on, because the other one too is just like that. The next one goes from eighty-eight-point-six to eighty-eight-point-four. Again, point-two of acres. It doesn't equal almost two acres. I don't understand.
What we're doing is we're taking point-six-two acres from lot one-eighteen-one-dash-three, and we're taking one-point-two-six acres from lot one-twenty-one-dash-one-dash-one-point-one. That adds up to one-point-eight acres, which is what we're adding. The reason why the balances don't add up is because the one-one-one-eight-dash-one-dash-three lot is disappearing. So what was left of that one-point-oh-four acres is being added to one-twenty-one-one-point-one. That's why her calculations weren't added. She did not realize that we're adding what's left of one-point, the one-point-oh-four acres left in one-eighteen to one-twenty-one.
Acknowledged, and engineering, please.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, I still don't understand that. I have to go back to first grade math.
There are three tax lots being, and at the end of the project, there will be two tax lots. So they're transferring land from a third, smaller parcel into each of the two larger parcels. That's why you're not seeing a net reduction because they're getting.
I only see one-one-eight-point-one-dash-four getting a little bigger. I guess you're saying that one-one-eight-one-dash-three is going to disappear?
Correct.
But it says one-point-seven to one-point-oh-four. So that only goes down.
No, it says one-point-seven with point-six-two acres being transferred to parcel B and one-point-oh-four acres being transferred to parcel C.
Okay, parcel C is one-two-one-dash-two-dash-one-point-one?
Correct.
So then how does it go from eighty-eight-point-six to eighty-eight-point-four? If you're.
Eighty-eight-point, eighty-eight-point-six, they're taking out one-point-twenty-six, but then they're adding from that third parcel, one-point-oh-four, so the net change is point-twenty-two.
Okay, I don't see anything with one-point-twenty-six, but I guess it's in there. I just see one-point-one.
Parcel A is shown on the map as one-point-two-six acres.
So where does the one-point-twenty-six go and comes from?
One-point-twenty-six.
If you come up here and look at the map, it'd be much easier to see.
Okay.
Here's the original one-point-five-five acres. We're taking point-six-two acres and adding it over here. See the point-six-two?
Yeah, but where's the coming from here?
Coming out of this piece here, one-eighteen-one, which is one-point-seven beginning. But it subtracts point-six-two, leaving one-point-oh-four, but that one-point-oh-four gets added into this parcel here, parcel C.
Okay, because this is missing on our paper, like, this is the middle piece, so that's why I didn't understand.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions from the public? Go ahead.
Just a quick question with this board. Moving acres, parcels, you know, parcels and stuff combined, like, what's the purpose of all this stuff? Is there any answers as far as what's being developed there? Is it changing? Is it going to change anything as far as zoning or anything like that?
There's no zoning or use, anything like that. There's no construction, there's no excavation. And Mr. Cisaza didn't state the reason when he opened. Would you care to restate it?
Sure, we're just taking two buildings that are currently on a different parcel and adding them to the house parcel because they're used as supplements to the house. No zoning change being requested, no construction being done, nothing. It's just a matter of changing the line on the map.
Will that, I mean, is it being planned on being sold, that parcel? Is there just, is there a plan in just combining these eight? Why would, why would we go through, yeah, why would the person we want?
You know, what's the end result?
There are no plans that have been submitted to the village for any development or change of ownership or anything further than what you're hearing about tonight. If there were something proposed in the future, they would have to reapply to the village for a new
Yes, I understand.
permit or application to do whatever it is they intend.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Go ahead, simply state your name and address, please.
Um, dining regard, twenty-four Capnot Road. My question is, and I don't know if this is the right question, but with merging the parcels together, does that change anything as far as it being residential versus other? What is it classified and what is it?
No, no zoning, no use change, nothing. Nothing changes. All it does is change the size of the parcel on the map.
So what is it classified as now?
It's two zones. Part of it's BG zone, part of it's an RA zone.
Okay, so part of it's BG, part of it's RA, but the zoning lines are not being changed or being requested to change.
It is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Legal, Mr. Conan, welcome to your first meeting of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any, Mr. Cisaza?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any, Mr. Cisaza?
No, no, I don't. I think it's pretty clear then. The application, is it for a lot line change or a re-subdivision or something?
Just a lot line change.
Essentially, you're, you're going to be consolidated.
Yes.
Eliminating one of the tax lots and.
One tax lot will be eliminated, and what I had done earlier for the board, because it's a confusing map because there's so many different lot lines and slope easements and so on, basically what we're doing is we're taking this green lot, which is the current one-point-five-five, we're adding this to it, and so the final size would be three-point-four-four. And we'll be removing a lot of these superfluous lines in there.
Where's the second, where's the second one?
It's over on here. You don't see it on this map, but this is it here. And it actually runs.
He's showing the elements.
Yeah.
Ready for, yeah. Okay, all right, so last call for the public. Anything, anyone? Okay, I can see no hands.
I have one question. So is this, so with the bigger, it was one-point-something, one-point-fifty-five, now it's going to be three acres, correct, in one of the new parcels?
Approximately.
Approximately. So in the future, if that's a standalone piece of acreage, what's the stipulation on that going to be compared to what it was at one-point-fifty-five acres? Much bigger house can be built on it, or can it be subdivided eventually again because now you've got maybe an acre and a half of each? How does that acreage, you know, go in the future from one-point-five?
Do you want to do this one?
I mean, it would be large enough that it would meet the zoning requirements to be able to subdivide it in the future. That's a possibility. I mean, the applicant is asking to make the lot bigger to have it as part of the house lot, so he's not really.
Right, I understand moving the line itself with things, I guess, close to, don't want it or close to it or such, but it also just leaves that open, and that you can subdivide it again and put another one on or something in the future.
Yes, that's possible, or, I mean, if he left that as part of a larger parcel, it would really be the same thing. He would just carve one extra lot out of the larger parcel if that was the intention.
All right, well, I think you can really cut up one and a half acres, can't you, in today's zoning?
Uh, the minimum in this, the minimum without variances is forty thousand square feet.
Okay, yeah, that is kind of, I think, forty-two thousand or something like that, so, okay. So it doesn't really.
There's no proposal in front of the board that we're evaluating to do anything. All he's doing is moving property wise. There's no physical change.
I just wanted to, you know, ask that question, so thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, not hearing any, seeing any other hands. Need a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion closed.
Second.
Aye.
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 Four ayes, motion carried. Four ayes, motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. So at this point, we need to make a secret determination for Mr. Cisaza. With all the information we have, the secret won't go down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, okay. Oh, oh, okay. All right, got you, got you.
Mr. Cisaza, say.
Yes. Aye. Yes.
Okay, the motion for declaring a negative declaration for secret for the Cisaza lot line project?
Second.
Second.
Both?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, stating a declaration for the Cisaza lot line project. And I think at this point, we're supposed to ask Mr. Conan to write up a negative declaration for Mr. Cisaza?
Very good.
Thank you.
Are you able to act? It's a nice meeting, or will we act at the next meeting? And we'll have to go back to the ZBA for a final vote.
I need legal counsel on this one.
I'm sorry.
Now, can we refer Mr. Cisaza back to the ZBA right now, or do we have to wait for the secret declaration to be written in some way?
You can make the referral now because he's not going to go tomorrow, so. So it will be in the pipeline, the, generally, once a matter before the planning board, we refer to the zoning board in the dual track, so it can actually be appearing before that zoning board. They just can't act. They can take, do their hearings, they can, they can consult, and they can report the plan.
Then you can, you can.
I've been to the ZBA, presented everything. I had no further questions, but they cannot act until the plating board acts. That's what I was told by the.
Just with respect to secret, correct?
Right, so now that we have a negative deck, I can go back to the ZBA, they can take a final vote, and then the plating board can act based on the variance that's granted, and they can issue an approval or a denial, whatever their pleasure.
Does he need to, if this paper was signed, for the negative deck before he goes to the ZBA?
It's, it's, you're splitting hairs, really. He can, you can give him the referral now, by the time he gets there, he will have the, the written, the written, uh, the written negative deck, and if for any reason they don't have it at the ZBA, or can call up and say, please forward.
Do I need to do a motion for the referral to the ZBA? Or just refer to the ZBA?
I think he was already referred by this board, so he'll be, basically, he'll be going back, like, he's towards the board already.
Okay.
He's just been returning from the board. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
After I speak to the ZBA, I'll get back in touch and advise you what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just for my own application, is there a full EAF as a matter of this, or just a short?
Short form.
Short form EAF. Okay, and we determined this was an unwisest act.
Correct. And again, there was no construction, no explanation. Okay, line nine oh seven, public hearing, applicant sixty-one East Main Street LLC, site plan and subdivision slash lot line change, sixty-one East Main Street, section block and lot, one-one-four dash one dash three dot two-two, and one-on-three dash two dash three-one. Give me.
For the record, my name is Michael Morgante, I'm the engineer for the Sapp Station Plating Board. Last we were here, one of the outstanding items for us to do a little research and homework on was the water and sewer usage in the Village of Washington. So we went on the New York State D E C website, which contains the Stevie's permit, which is the actual permit. It's issued by the state for discharge limits associated with the Village wastewater treatment plant. And what we found is the permitted monthly average for sewage is eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons per day. So if they're permitted, it's what they can handle. And they're currently receiving an average monthly flow of about five-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand gallons per day. So there's an abundance of capacity there, anywhere about three-hundred and looks like twenty-one-thousand gallons per day. This project will be contributing about six-thousand-and-sixty gallons per day if it was a person from the site. Then we also took a look at what the water usage rates were in the village. And it turns out the permitted average day of water withdrawal is about five-hundred-thousand, five-hundred-thousand gallons per day with a maximum day withdrawal of one-point-two million gallons per day. And again, we're only six-thousand-and-sixty gallons per day, which actually represents about one-point-two percent of five-hundred-thousand gallons per day. So there is adequate, there's an abundance of capacity for both water and sewer in the village as it relates to this proposed project. So that was, according to my records, I think one of the last items we needed to address with this board. I don't believe there are any, anything else outstanding. If there's any additional questions or concerns from either the board or public, we would certainly be glad to review that and answer that message in a minute.
Thank you. John, do you have anything to say on the water and sewer numbers?
We did receive the same numbers that Mike has. We reviewed with the water department and the sewer department, and they've confirmed that the numbers they provided are accurate.
Did you have to throw a question in there? We get water restrictions in summer, and what is that water restriction based on?
Between the D E C and the Health Department, there are requirements that the village maintain a large reserve of water. You're not allowed to use a hundred percent of what you have available. So once you hit that reserve, the restriction is kept. It doesn't necessarily mean you're out of water. It means you're on a level where they've determined you should be reserved.
Thank you. Legal, do you have anything for Mr. Morgante up right now?
I do not.
Thank you. At this time, we do a motion to open a public hearing for public comment.
Motion. Second comment? Aye.
Motion is carried to open the public hearing for sixty-one East Main. From the public, anybody?
My name is Denise Wiggins. I live at sixty-six Ocean Avenue. And my question is, how does this benefit the Village of Washington though? As you drive through the village and to the outskirts, there are numerous houses that are empty for rent, for sale. People are leaving our village because we're being priced out. What is the point of putting more dwellings when we don't have people to live here? Dwellings that are not needed, they're, they don't look like anything else in the village. And I just don't see the point of putting this extra burden on the people that are still here trying to survive, aging out, families are not moving in. It used to be people from New York City would move up here and commute. They're not doing that anymore. So what is, what's, what's the benefit to the Village of Washington though, to have this situation happen?
Thank you for your comment. In the back?
Hi, Bill Burley. You mentioned Burley in the receipt. I got an email from you. I guess my question is, I don't like that responses to my questions. We have our traffic consultant here today, so I'd be glad Mr. Phil Burley is here. I'd be glad to let him speak and work towards answering your questions. Fine, fine.
Just briefly, I need to drop in here one, one thing. A bigger point since I've been chair, I am the former, the chair before me. We do try and go answer that to the public. There is not a, like, question-answer format that we're actually allowed to do for legal reasons and other things, but when we get questions, and particularly the ones that are submitted in writing, I try and work them into questions for the applicant. It's funny, we send, we do send them to the applicant. So when they show up, hopefully the questions are answered during meetings. And this particular project, because traffic and water mitigation is so big on everyone's concern, we actually produced a supplement that was given out to the public in terms of what mitigation processes were going to be used for this project. So those questions are answered with technical data. Then again, the questions are not going to be answered, excuse me, the questions are not going to be answered directly in the format that you placed them, but there are answers to a lot of the questions out there. Okay, and let's turn it over to Mr. Burley, and you'll get another chance to speak also.
Good evening. Phil Burley, Colliers Engineering Design. Many of the questions that Mr. Burley had in his letter, I did get his letter today, were previously asked and are in the record, but I'll give a quick synopsis just to, you know, try to get you the latest information that's in the record. So one of the questions was, how do we account for background growth in terms of what other traffic is going to occur in the area? So a growth factor is used in that case, and it's looked at based on DOT, New York State DOT, because this is a state highway. A growth factor of two percent was used in projecting background. And again, that's based on the DOT historical information. There was a second question relative to the size and width of the connection through Route ninety-four to East Main Street. The driveway is a twenty-six-foot-wide driveway, one lane entering, one lane exiting. New York State DOT criteria in terms of curbing, drainage, site distances, those have all been provided. We are in a permit process with New York State DOT, actually since last April. We've received numerous comments. The plans have been revised to address those comments. Everything dealing from ADA compliant items relative to sidewalks, right-of-way being located relative to mitigation that they've asked for by this development, including some upgrades to traffic signals at Brotherhood Plaza Drive and at Route two-O-eight and Route ninety-four. Those are going to be requirements of the permit from DOT that the applicant will pay for and install new video detection to improve the efficiency of that operation. And then there's also, we had. Uh and then there's also, uh we had looked at the uh existing crosswalk at Route ninety four. I think that was one of your other questions. So we have to bring that up in the current ADA compliance with respect to the curb ramps, the sidewalk. Uh we had recommended what is referred to as a uh RRFP, Rapid Rectangulate Flashing Beacon. And that uh is subject to DOT's permitting. Uh we have committed to do that. At this point in time, DOT has indicated that they don't believe it satisfies their warrants. Uh but they would be open to a uh after study and we would bond that improvement if it was so uh required so that that could be done in the future. Uh your next item was a definition of what levels of service are, A, B, C, D, E, F. It's just like in school and it's a grading system and it it's tied to average vehicle delays. Of course, the A is the best, which we have very little delays. And then as those delays increase, uh those levels of service are assigned. There's more detail in the record. The analysis procedures that are used are based on New York State DOT criteria uh for evaluating intersections. Uh there was questions relative to the effect of school buses. Uh this board had asked uh last year actually for us to provide more information and the breakdown. Uh I think in the highest time, in in traffic studies, you look at one hour periods in terms of analysis. I believe, I'm going from memory here, I believe the highest time period had uh nine buses um in the on East Spain Street in the highest fifteen minute time period, which we we do data collection in fifteen minute periods to identify uh where the peaks occur. And we observed, you know, the queues that occur, when the buses are picking up and dropping off. That information was submitted, I believe, May nineteen of twenty uh twenty two. So that's all in the record. Uh there were some questions about the traffic generation for the site. And again, we have to use standards that DOT requires. Uh they're published by what's called the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And that determines what the trip generation is. For a multi-unit building like this at twenty eight units, the rates are actually a little lower than what we used in our analysis. We used a higher range of rates. And DOT was um okay with that, just to see what, you know, potential impacts would be. Uh during the highest time period, I believe we're generating approximately thirty trips in a one hour period is uh is the highest time period. And the reason that people say, well, people have two cars and then some people have three cars, people visiting, is spread out over several hour periods. So this is, you know, based on, as they said, requirements that we have to provide based on DOT requirements for any development on any any state highway in the state of New York, the same standards are used. Uh in terms of, uh I mentioned the the improvements. Uh that's a requirement of New York State DOT to improve the video detection at the existing signals to try to uh improve the efficiency of the operation and that would be at the expense of this applicant. Uh in terms of the time periods, uh we we identify peak one hour periods. So that's the time when it's the highest total volume on the roadway. But we don't just look at that one time period. We look at DOT data that covers uh all twenty four hours of the day in terms of scene patterns. Uh the specific counts for this project, which again are in the in the town files, uh we did counts from six thirty to nine thirty AM and I believe from two thirty to six PM to capture uh the the bits of of traffic. Um again, this is all in the record and those were the points in your letter. Uh I just forgot it today, so, you know, we can submit another letter of uh what I just uh regretted to record.
I did submit it here April four.
Understood. I I was unfortunately, I didn't get a copy until last night and I dreaded for that, so. And, you know, those, again, those were good comments. A lot of them were already in the record and the board had asked some of the same comments.
I read I read the the reports that I believe were available to us.
Yes.
And I didn't see where the study are traffic from six fifteen on. I still didn't see that in the reports.
That wasn't uh six fifteen, six six thirty. Uh and the the copies of the counts are actually in uh the files of the actual New York County.
You have the date of that, just the study timing?
Uh off the top of my head, the initial counts were done in December of twenty one, okay? Uh the board asked us to do supplemental counts. Those were done, I'm going to say, last May of twenty twenty two. Uh we also had historical data from New York State DOT uh that they collect on their own. But yeah, again, the 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 more recent uh counts were, I believe, May of last year. I can't get the exact date.
My my problem with that is, I am out on Route ninety four, okay? I don't need to be out there until ten of seven every morning to get to my destination timely. I have to leave at twenty five of seven to get ahead of all the school, the high school traffic that is coming in there. I'm often, if I do leave that late, I'm often stopped. And I can't imagine more cars coming out of sixty one trying to cross the traffic that's coming this way because the majority of our traffic in the morning goes to two oh eight.
Correct.
So they're crossing eastbound traffic to get to the westbound traffic, which is going to be very fast. My my other situation is, you talk about formulas, okay? Now, you were saying that in both May and December of those those days, people physically studied the traffic?
Correct.
May I ask who they were, who they represented?
My or my company's.
I would ask that we have a more neutral counting of traffic. I would volunteer to sit there three mornings a week with someone from the board, someone from your company, et cetera, and get a neutral study, the same as all the studies that are done are presented to us by the applicant.
So, but one item, uh the traffic counts also include video data collection so that we have a record of it. That's provided and the break is breakdown is from that.
Have you shared that with anybody?
The the breakdown and summaries have been submitted to this board and it's also been provided through New York State DOT.
Talking about the video.
I'm sorry?
I'm referring to the video.
Not to this board, no, which we can.
Can I ask that the board, be given a copy of the video to see for themselves?
The board would like that, we can provide that. Uh just for your own edification, the video does show uh when, you know, the school buses are stopping and the queues that occur that you're referring to, so.
I'm coming home from that daily destination every day at approximately eight thirty and I am always stopped on ninety four. So I lived at one twenty eight Lewis, okay, so I'm coming down ninety four. I've always stopped for school buses, two school buses to stop along there and the traffic behind them daily is approximately fifty to sixty cars backing up, well past the village line. Every morning that their school is open, okay? And and I'd like to see where that is accounted for in your studies. The the other thing that.
Let me help you for one second. My name is Contreras Bestner. I'm at Southern Carrington Lane.
Excuse me, can we, Mr. Hurley, finish please? Thank you.
My other question is, I read the report from Orange County and I read the report from New York State. They're very similar in wording and in probably copying from the application or from some information that was given to them. I ask that both of those entities be asked to come to a public hearing because one, you talk about the use of formulas, we cannot, something this important to us cannot fit into a formula. And I very much question Orange County, when I look at what's happened down in Autry.
Yeah, but you have to stay on subject, please.
Twenty buildings now on the side of the.
Mr. Hurley, we have to stay on subject right now. We have to stay on sixty one. I understand, we have to stay on subject. Uh we have to stay on sixty one.
I don't trust their approval of this. I want to ask them questions face to face, okay, because I do not trust either organization's approval. Their books, if you read them, they're pat answers. And they're not full.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Hurley.
Uh just just one response in terms of New York State DOT is who we have to get our permit for for our driveway. And for this for this size development, the amount of mitigation that they're requiring of the applicant is in acknowledgement of the conditions along ninety four. Regardless of this project, it's an existing condition. We're not causing that condition. But DOT is requiring us and it's in writing what they're requiring us to do to help the situation. Uh so they have reviewed it in detail and mitigation that they're asking for is uh, and I think we provided some rough numbers last meeting, uh is very expensive to do this work and it's a part of our requirement before they'll give us a permit for our driveway or before they'll allow units to be occupied, that work has to be completed.
And a flashing light is going to be a deterrent to people living on Route ninety four. Would you like a flashing light all night long?
The flashing light uh has not been approved by New York State DOT. The improvements that they're requiring are for the signal systems and to improve the video detection. Uh the statement that I made about the flashing light, which flashing light is called a rapid flashing beacon, is only activated when a pedestrian makes a call. It's not flashing all the time. That's their standard. We had identified that and if the board so desires, that would be a condition of our approval to study that. At this point in time, New York State DOT is not approving that because they feel that there's not enough pedestrian volume at that location to warrant that. And that was in the in their in their letters.
Once again, I just want on the record that I'm not satisfied with the status.
A lot of time this evening, so we'll call, we'll say thank you. Mr. Burley, you complete? All right, next person from the public would like to speak?
First of all, I thought I'd ask for a question from one of the passengers you are. Can you answer the question of what?
Name and address, please.
Contreras Bestner, Southern Carrington.
Thank you.
Sir, can you answer the question as to whether or not they they'll be making a left-hand turn out of that parking lot? Has that been decided?
Yes, the there is no restriction uh placed on exiting the site. Traffic will be allowed to make a left turn or a right turn from the driveway at this point in time. Uh DOT always reserves the right at any point in time in the future to restrict movements to a state highway. But they've reviewed it, they've looked at the information and just like other locations and other intersections, there is uh no restricted movements uh at the driveway.
I'm going to submit these pictures. I should I should have sent them to the board um one of the day after I took them. On March thirtieth, I'm sitting at the light right before Brotherhood Plaza. And there I took a video. There's tons of cars behind me. There's tons of cars in front of me. I'm at a green light. The intersection, the Brotherhood, is blocked. There's probably about six cars on Brotherhood and that goes all the way into town. Um and I just gonna, I'm gonna send the the pictures there so that um it's on the record. Second of all, again, I'm going to reiterate, six thousand gallons of water a day is over two millions of gallons of water, two point two million gallons of water. I think there was a deli that caught on fire down the road. They had to bring other fire departments in because they didn't have sufficient water for them. What's stopping that from happening here? Our homes are in danger by putting up this this building. The only other thing I wanted to make note is um if you had moved into the property before um the beautiful foliage goes away and before you knock down the trees, take a look at how pretty it is.
Thank you for your time this evening. I just, next person from the public would like to speak?
Uh William Palmer.
Please stand, please stand.
William Palmer, ten-decked drive, questions, I know. I always get back to a small village law, one day, about one of the most important powers and duties granted, the flesh such to the village government, is the authority and responsibility under take village comprehensive to regulate land use for the purpose of protecting the public, health, safety, general welfare of the citizens. This project, when we all became really aware of it, uh last summer, most of the people in here. If we had become aware of this project a lot earlier, you could say that you posted everything to where you were later you were required to post it. There's not one person in this village of the two thousand residences that we visited, okay, that wants this project to go through because it's not in the general welfare and interest of the of the public, okay? It's contrary to that. It's a flood hazard, no matter how high you build it, it's going to divert water and it would have been dead on arrival on my desk if I were the mayor at the time with no questions asked. You got the property, do something else with it or go build that or twenty eight apartments further into town somewhere. Okay, so this is might might be belated, but it's also belated the uh I know a lot of the people that are on the board, nobody ever came up to me and told me this was going on. I had my own life, busy with lots of other stuff besides the local town. And if you took account right now, uh if you put this up to a vote to the citizens, because it's for the general welfare of all the citizens, I think we should vote on whether we want this project done. Okay, that's the way I feel. I want to vote a referendum on it.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? There was two hands up. You will be the active this gentleman.
You may have one second. Mine are written down. You you might put that. It's okay.
Someone speak.
Okay, Jolie Zara, seventy one West Main Street. So listening to the traffic study, the information that came out and the dates were like around December or May. Again, that was from two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty one. We've now had a new little strip mold that's opened on the other side of the lake in town that adds at least ten more minutes to my commute to just pick up my child at Taff Elementary School in the afternoon. I come from Harp, Alaska. We're talking after five o'clock, between five, five fifteen when I leave my house. It takes me over fifteen minutes to get to her. Now, about two weeks ago, there was a sports bus going into the high school or some kind of traveling bus. It just calmed out right in the middle of the road. The police have to come down and guide traffic around into like the parking area. So what happens in any traffic studies when somebody's making a left turn and they try and hurry up to make that left turn out of this parking area? And, you know, traffic is already backed up. There's red light and people are waiting in line and they're trying to jam themselves in there because they've got three, four people behind them trying to lethal work. Where's a traffic study on that? When there's an accident right there. Or who knows, maybe two or three cars are going to be at an accident. Has anybody looked into that, sir? Traffic, sir? Traffic, sir? Okay, anyway, so I have a big concern over that, including, we also had a fire recently right off of ninety-four on that side down by the sewer plant. Again, you know, it's more so on the traffic. Okay. Parking, yeah, I think the whole village knows I was sued over my front parking area at my house. You know, this parking is supposed to be behind buildings. Apartment complex is here in the village. You don't see the parking. It's tucked away behind the buildings. Why is this going forward or trying to go forward? And the parking is right there, you see it. I didn't see any plans whether putting bushes up or planting more trees or anything like that to even try and hide it or make it, you know, pleasant. Okay, mine, by the way, you know, mine was like this fictitious business I was running, but this is office residential. It's not even zoned properly for just residential. But again, in the zoning right now, there shouldn't even be parking out in the open. And anybody knows that is me because I got sued over this. Granted, it was just going to be dismissed. But still, I mean, if someone's going to pick on me for a little four-car parking area when there's no existing business being run, that this was all created out of, you know, fake dreaming of stuff, this is a serious parking lot, I think fifty-six spots. And somebody can't find that? Right, fifty-six parking spots out in the middle of the whole complex of what they're calling it. And it's not even zoned properly.
Time is up. Thank you.
Seriously, I have one more thing. Thank you.
One more, go ahead.
So do we, does the village have any set things on, you know, any builders or, you know, development people adding to recreation? You know, ever since COVID, there's a lot of expenses out there. And having, you know, one, I think it was said, one to two kids per apartment possibility? The average in America is what, two point two kids? So now you're adding, you know, over fifty kids. What is this person doing for recreation on their own property? What are they adding to the village to add more, you know, recreation availability to kids? If that's what they're saying, that they're getting one to two kids per apartment or so, the current mayor had been mayor before. And what I understand is when he was mayor before and developers came in, there was money set aside to add to the parks and such.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments this evening. Sir, you're next. Thank you.
She covered my traffic situation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Last call for public. Okay, I'd like to thank everyone. I just have one question. From Mr. Bill. Could you explain the difference in the way the traffic lights that we have now work as compared to the traffic lights that are being proposed? And again, as I understand it, do the traffic lights that we have now contribute or help our traffic condition?
The existing traffic signals, when they were installed, were installed with what are called loop detectors, which are placed in the pavement. They sometimes fail, which creates issues. They're not as responsive as video detection because video detection allows to pick up vehicles on each approach and can adjust more efficiently for those flows. So there's two reasons why New York State DOT is asking this applicant as part of his permit. And he just happens to be the one here at this point in time in front of them. Number one is it helps them with maintenance going forward so that if there is an issue with the loop, they don't have to have a crew come out and repair that, number one. Number two, if the signal goes out of sync with the video detection, they're tied in remotely to the DOT. So again, they don't have to have someone come out to the field. They can go on the computer, see what's happening, and adjust to it immediately. In this particular case, these are designed to also be expanded to what's called an adaptive, fully adaptive system, which is used on really main corridors such as Route two eleven in town of Wallkill, in Kipsey on Route nine. This doesn't really qualify that at this time, but it's in, once you have the video detection, it's the piece that would allow that to be added as a future if the department wanted to. From an efficiency standpoint, it will improve traffic flow. The stopping of buses is still going to occur during those time periods when the buses stop and there's a backup. But it will tweak out a little bit more of the efficiency of the current signal systems in terms of being reactive to individual cycles of the signal.
Thank you. Any questions from engineering?
Nothing new. We do have some previous outstanding technical items.
Understood. Other than a suggestion, I am new to the board and new to review of this particular application.
In advance of the meeting, however, I did have a number of conversations with different village representatives as well as this board and consultants. And I did learn that the village has taken steps to retain a professional plan. And I would suggest that we adjourn the public hearing, keep it open. Until such time, which I think would be by the next meeting, the planner would be on board, could review this application in total and give us any feedback that might be necessary for the board's consideration. And that may be not quite frank, but I think it would be prudent and reasonable to do that as well as one of the members of the public today indicated that they had additional information, by the way, of videos of the traffic that they'd like to submit to this board. So I would urge that the public hearing not be closed, that it be kept open for till the next meeting. And I just have some questions also for the planner and also for, I think that they're also maybe bringing in an engineer as well, has some fresh eyes on the project. And one of those concerns that I had is having to complete the entire code, but with respect to the number of units that are being proposed for this property. It's twenty-eight units, I heard from the public. But if you do the math, I believe that as of right, under the code right now, about half that would be from this, about fourteen, I think the calculation is actually less than fourteen. And that's based upon that lot, I believe that's closer to the Moodna Creek. And that actually, I mean, realized till today, actually straddles the creek and goes onto the other side of that river. And my understanding was that the calculation for the bulk of this was done on not only that land, but also the bed of the stream. Our code in the village, I think, is silent on the calculation where most of the time you have an adjustment of the calculation, the square footage, and how much of that bulk would be used towards the residences. But there's also a provision of our code, which I just saw just this afternoon, with respect to subdivision elements for residential purposes. And particularly, I'd like to talk to a planner about that, particularly Section one fifty seventeen, subparagraph E, which with respect to flooding lands, I believe I heard testimony from the public hearing that there was a problem with in the past flooding of this particular area. But the planning board does reserve the right to disregard land in connotation of building area that's subject to flooding. So, I mean, I think just to be prudent, I would like a fresh set of eyes that are coming in to take a look at this, issue a report, and then move forward with this application. I thought Dr. Greeley's presentation was excellent today, but I still would like to see, and I would urge this board to continue the public hearing for that purpose.
The land that floods in the back is basically going to be dedicated as a non-building parcel. So it's going to be green forever.
Right. It actually has to be because it is a river there and there's also a required setback.
That's been known since day one on this project. Not new.
The question is whether the use of it for bulk purposes is an appropriate thing to be done. I'd like the planner to agree on.
Orange County Department of Finance is okay with that? Or is okay with it when they recommended it?
Right, and county planning does look at it with respect to county impacts. I'm more concerned about the village.
Thank you.
And respectfully, Mr. Bill, I just think it would be a prudent thing to do. With respect to the long EAF that I've looked at today, it was dated August of twenty twenty-two. So that was submitted to the board for about eight months.
Yeah, we were ready to decide on this back then.
Right, right. So I mean, that's my position. I would just respectfully ask that the court, rather, the board, extend the public hearing and just delay the seeker conclusion till we've had the planner base and the new engineer base on these issues.
John, do you have anything to say?
We've been through this many times over the last three years. Now we have new counsel, he's given his opinion. Our previous counsel disagreed.
Understood. All right, let's have a discussion with the board. Oh, Tom, you had something. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mike, actually, I think.
I apologize if I said something.
No, go ahead.
All right. Tom, then, just a moment.
Mike, just a question. Let's assume they started building, okay? How soon are those traffic lights going to be installed?
That would be a better question actually.
The video detection would be part of the permit requirement. So it would be done concurrent with the usage type of the COs. But the DOT would issue a permit after seeker is complete with the lead agency. And those would be installed, typically, just getting a contractor on board and putting in, that would be part of the requirements of the permit of the applicant. So they would have to be in place before any COs could be issued. So before there's any traffic generated, the improvement has to be in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Ross, your attorney on behalf of the applicant. As you all know, this project has been before the board for eight, nine, ten months now. Public hearings have been open since last fall. Every question that the applicant has been asked has been answered, including the issues about the flooding area and Moodna Creek and the height of the buildings and all of the traffic issues that have been over and over again answered. It's our position that it's, the board, it's up to the board to make the call whether to close the public hearing. It's time to close the public hearing and move this project forward. The issues with respect to, that have been raised with respect to the number of units and the other things have been addressed before and will be addressed by the Zone Board of Appeals as this project review continues. Closing the public hearing certainly isn't the end of the cycle of the review. We certainly acknowledge that. But it's time for the public hearing portion of this, of this review to be concluded. And we'd ask that the board do that today.
Understood. Mr. Bill, I understand your position. And many of the topics that you brought up, we've been through like seven times already. Then quite confident that we're at with that. So going to have a discussion with the board. Is any other board member any questions for the afternoon?
The question I have probably doesn't have anything to do with this. I know we're talking about sixty-one May, but I remember vaguely somebody saying something about another path to Route two oh eight seventeen to avoid that traffic.
That's in the company plan. That's not here.
Okay, so that's not this. Okay, just wanted to make sure. In terms of what the lawyer was speaking about, I was very concerned that he was just coming on board and that he had a chance, time to review whatever's happening. So that's your mic, that's all I have to say. And I understand that you've been through this many times.
John? All right, so let's take a trouble. Public hearing open or closed?
I wanted to give another question. Can you hear anyone?
This lady in the front row.
My name is Marilyn Roycer. I would just like to say, the planning board is here working for our village. We can't just come close it down on us when people really have to have a say in what's going on in this town. We've seen so many changes in this town. Undergone votes gone out of it. And if they start all this traffic down here and back it up where we live, we can hardly get out of our driveways now. And it's pretty unsafe if they, if a lot of traffic is going to build up upon two oh eight where there's many senior citizens and sick people on that route.
Do you think kids walk into school?
Kids walk to school from there, from car ride crossing and off road area. So the town board is working for this village, and I don't think it would be fair that they can want us to be shut down.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Philip Draken, I'm with the Frischberg Laws. I went back and I looked at the videos for one twenty-four meter, two fourteen meter, the three twenty-eight meter. Same questions are being asked in each of the meetings. Same questions are being answered in each of the meetings. I don't see how the public is served yet another round. The same questions with the same answers being given. So I would encourage you, saying new counsel's advice, to close the meeting inasmuch as we're not asking any new questions, the same ones with the same answers.
We have a question. If we close the public hearing today, my understanding is that this then goes to the ZBA?
No.
After, excuse me, after a secret declaration, it goes to the ZBA? And then with the term of termination, then it will come back to us?
Correct, then we come back.
Would it be an additional public hearing for the ZBA?
You'd be, most likely, I don't know whether the status of the application before the ZBA, whether they have dual track and they're just waiting at this point for us to conclude the seeker hearing, the planning board's lead agency? I just don't know off the top of my head because I just haven't had a conversation yet with the ZBA. But my request to the board to keep the public hearing open, I can understand there has been a number of public hearings and I'm sure there's a great deal of repetition on some of the.
It's only repetition at this point. Only, only.
A pretty kind. A pretty kind. But we're not getting answers to our repetitive questions. My request is only with respect because there's going to be a new set of eyes, professional set of eyes on the application. And for that limited purpose is what I want in the public hearing to stay open. And it's my concept that a professional planner would look at the application, the status of it, and if there's something that needed to be brought to your attention, it would be done in a memorandum type of submission, which the public would have access to and maybe would have commented on. It is speculation, I just don't know how the planner would do it, but that's generally the way it would be, in a memo form with words. But I didn't want to shut off the ability of the public to comment on anything that might be brought up in a professional planner's memo on the application. And I think, yes, would it delay by thirty days? Yes, but I don't think it's an unreasonable delay.
Do you have something?
Hi, I always get this part wrong. Can you shovel it through this?
Just put that close to your mouth and talk.
Just talk like that. Okay. Okay, my concern is this. I think people are very, very, rightly so, looking for full disclosure. And they're looking for best ways to build their knowledge base. Okay, I think that's something we can all understand. We all live here, we want to make sure that this is fully disclosed, and you're new, and this is a very deep process that's been going on for a long period of time. And are you suggesting that the previous advice that we moved on from the professionals might have been deficient?
No, I am saying that a new set of eyes by a professional planner, which I don't believe had laid in on this project. I use them on the boards that I deal with, and they're extremely insightful on applications, things that many engineers and attorneys and planning boards don't normally think of. And I think it's enlightening. And since the village has gone to the expense of actually voting and, I believe, in the process of retaining one, I think we should just make use of that resource and have a one-month delay, and if by the time in one month from now, if there's nothing new in what the planner is telling us, by all means, move this application along.
I'd like to follow that question. You are bringing forward what? You're bringing forward a recast of the entire process? What are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that the person that is being retained by the village be given an opportunity to review and report to you on the application, and that since it would most likely be in a written form, that the public have an opportunity to review it, as they can under the Freedom of Information law, they can review everything and make further comments.
Okay, let me ask you another question, just so we all know what we're all hearing, okay? Is there a standard challenge that this person will be bringing forward?
I don't understand the question.
Well, you're saying that perhaps the previous advice that we received then was disclosed on all sides, may have overlooked something, there may have been something that escaped discovery, there may be another approach to it that is still valid. So, what's the standard?
The standard is this board, as the planning board, needs to hear from, you don't have to accept everything, but to hear from the public, the public hearings, and its consultants, so that the decision of the board, when they do come to a decision, will be properly backed up.
Okay, let's.
I tell you this because my goal is not to advise anyone else, but to advise the board.
And our goal is to provide information based on professional opinions. I mean, I can't sit here and say, I don't like that, so I won't do it. I have to listen to the regs that we're handed, we have to set aside personal likes or dislikes, and we can, we must rely on professional standard, opinion, et cetera. I can't make up a traffic study, right? I can't do that.
I agree completely with the question.
That's exactly right. So I'm saying this, are you saying that this will be a timely review, you are recommending a 30-day pushback? Are you saying that these comments would be available for us to review and look at to be responsive for the public also at the next meeting?
My understanding is that the, I want to tell you what my understanding is, what I've learned secondhand, is that the Board of Trustees has indicated that they are going to retain a professional planner to assist the planning board and the town, and move also in the comprehensive plan you write as well, and that this board, I suggest that it would be a good idea to have a planner look at this board so that this board can be assured that the decision that it ultimately makes in this, on this application, is fully informed and the rights of the applicant are fully protected and the rights of the village residents are fully protected as well. That's the only, I'm not looking to delay for the delay's sake. If this is a delay, I mean, this is my first meeting here, so I don't have the track record that.
It's a delay.
I'm sorry?
It's a delay if we do it. Another, I should say it a different way.
But it is new information, that's why, I expect it'll be new information, and that's the only reason why.
I thank you for your input, and I will get to you soon. And I'm sure that no matter how many people, planners, whoever, get up here, everyone's going to have an opinion. People may see things, may see different things, may see other options. We've been living this for a really long time, and the questions from the public are traffic, water, water, traffic, traffic, water, water, traffic. We've submitted written documents to that effect. We've brought in professionals. There's nothing else going on, I guess, nothing at all. So, I'm kind of sold there, but, excuse me.
And if I might clarify just one piece, the closure of the public hearing has no impact on the board's ability to listen to a planner or review of this project. The board itself is more than capable of reviewing whatever a planner might have to say during this process and make its own call. So, what we don't need is another round of the same comments based on the same review, and let's end the public process of this, and let the board make the call based on the consultants that it hires.
Thank you. Do you have a question for you? The public hearing, can we close it for verbal public hearing this evening and move it open for written comments for a week, or some period of time?
You can. That's an option for written comment and then close it. And then, yes, that is, without a doubt, that's an option, however long you want it, one week, 10 days, that's up to the board. And at that point, after, not receiving it after a certain date, date certain when it will be closed, yes.
Okay, another question. If and when this planner comes on board, if and when this planner gets familiar enough with the project to go through it, because it is a complex project, and they issue a written report to the board, we're going to get this back after whatever else it goes, or whatever else we do. So we'll still have time to act on that in some way.
Yes, you will. My only issue is that the public comment period wasn't closed. That's my only.
Are we proceeding from opening, are we opening a public hearing?
It's unusual.
I like unusual, this is an unusual project, I like unusual.
I don't think there's any prohibition against it, but I would definitely ask the applicant if that were to come, if that were to occur, would they have any objection to it now? So, I mean, I'm not sure if they're willing to answer that question now, but if the applicant said they would have no objection to closing the oral portion of the meeting now, having it open for a week for receipt of the video and any other comments, but with the proviso that once the professional planner weighs in and gives a memo, if in the board's discretion in public hearing, for the public hearing, we need a little bit, would they be getting objection?
Thank you.
Hi. Am I doing this right or wrong?
Just a little closer.
Little closer, okay. Okay, you keep referencing the planner, the planner, in 30 days. Do you mean 30 days that the planner's going to have to look on it, or he or she gets in here within 30 days and brings his comments or passes on comments in time for the next scheduled meeting? I mean, if he gets hired on the 29th day of the 30-day window, he's going to need 30 days to become familiar, and this becomes 60, 90, and there may be other tolling items that push it very far out, you'll know that as a lawyer. So, this 30-day window, if the guy was sitting, or girl was sitting right here, we're working on it now, I think it's a marvelous idea. My concern is this, it will be pushed back and pushed back, and when it has to go back to zoning, the public loses another opportunity to see more information. I mean, this isn't over because we're doing this, it's going to keep progressing. I want to make sure people get more opportunity.
Right, and that, more opportunity is.
More opportunity is more opportunity. Move the thing along so they have the opportunity to come to more here, more meetings, sit and talk, and come back here when this thing is moving along. Because as long as it's in conjecture, cloud land, they're not going to get resolution.
Well, and that's why I made the request and suggestion to the board, because my understanding is not conjecture about the planner being hired, it is, the planner is being hired. But you're right, I don't have the control.
Okay, so we don't know when.
The village's board has the control. My understanding was that there was a resolution to that effect and that it was adopted. So that means the search is on right now, or someone has been contacted, I don't know. But I can't speak for what the Board of Trustees does, I was not at the meeting, I heard everything secondhand. I apologize, I really can't tell you.
Thank you. I just want to make one of them note, in order for this project to have continuity, we maintained our existing village engineer so that we wouldn't have extra eyes, new eyes, somebody else starting anew on the project. And I'm very thankful that this board kept on with us to get through this. So, for me, it seems kind of productive to try and bring in another set of eyes.
I don't know that, Mr. Chairman, I just have no idea. I apologize, John, you were extremely helpful today on the phone.
Just to give an explanation, you know, a lot of eyes have looked at this, and a lot of legal eyes before yours, and this project has just gone on and on and on. This public hearing was opened since last June, and we've had numerous meetings talking about flooding and talking about traffic and done written litigation as to what could have happened, we've gotten the D.O.T. involved, we've gotten the reports back from the police, we've gotten reports back from the fire, from EMS, et cetera. So they've all weighed in on this project at this point, and the applicant has literally said, yes, Orange County Department of Planning, yes to the police recommendations, yes to the fire recommendations, yes to extra parking, a week mandated that was above and beyond. They have said no to nothing. So I don't, anybody else who looks at this, what are they going to actually say to these people? More of what? They've said no, they haven't said no to any. So I really find it difficult to have a determination this evening. Now, I'm not the whole board, but we're going to ask the board to see what they'd like to do. Tom, the hearing will be closed. John?
I want to close it. I want to close it, but I do want to.
We're going to get it back.
Yeah.
Come back.
Yeah, because I'm concerned about the zoning board of appeals and what happens with that.
And that's them.
Right, and my question, because I'm not sure about this, I'm kind of new to this, this is ridiculous. When it goes to the zoning board of appeals, is there a public, is there an opportunity for the public to voice their concerns with the zoning board of appeals?
I don't know that, because I don't know where the zoning board of appeals is with respect to the application, if they've already conducted those, they may have already conducted public hearing and closed it some time ago, and they're waiting for the planning board at lead agency to make a secret determination. Because they can't act until this board makes this secret determination.
Got it.
So I don't know, maybe, yes, or no, I just can't.
The zoning board normally does have their own public hearing. Have you guys had a public hearing at the zoning board yet?
We have not. They were waiting for, the termination of this board is part of the public review, so we most likely will have another meeting.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing this evening.
Mr. Chairman, would that still be with the proviso of a week from now for receipt of written and the video, that's what I mentioned, or just completely?
Excuse me. Okay, additional written comments for a week.
Okay, so I make motion that we close the public hearing and allow for written comments and that video for a week.
Say.
Aye.
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 Motion is carried. So, at this point, we can adjourn or we can discuss the secret process?
I would suggest that since technically the meeting, the public hearing is still open, we still have the time for the video and for the written comments, that we leave the secret determination for this meeting. In that way, you will now, you will then hopefully have a planner on board and comment it to everybody timely, so quickly it'll make a heads up.
Okay. And Mr. Greenlee, as far as the videos, how would we gain access to those and make them available to the public, and they go on in Dropbox?
Yes, we can just provide them to the village and put them on the website.
Okay, if somebody could get them to me, get them, yeah, just get them to me, and I'll make sure that they get on the village's website with the village group. Okay. And just a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is carried. All right. You need to make that decision.